Thank you everyone for joining us. It's going to be some unique here. This is our seventh session, Rob's 27th. Casey, could you please pull the roll? Councilor Al for this?
Here.
Top desk?
Yeah.
You have it up?
Yeah.
Brian Campbell?
Here.
Angelo Campbell?
Adam Disney?
Here.
And Mary Martha? I am here. Just so we can kind of get a feel for who's in the room, I know there were several entities invited. If you could just kind of raise your hand so we have an idea. I think I know, but just so everyone else knows. If you are here from Paul, like, could you kind of just raise your hand? My kind of people, bad bro sitters. City of Winton? Town of Morris? City of Babbitt? And the ambulance service? Oh, I know there's more of you than that. I tell you all what came together. City of Tower? And the Ely area ambulance service? Good for. And then the Ely donation community hospital for. Excellent. Well, thank you all for attending. We truly appreciate you all being here. And you all know what an important... What important vital function this is not only to all the people in this room, obviously, but to our community and what this means to our community to make it run, to make it work, and to make people want to continue to live, work, and play here. So with that, I am going to invite Patty Bates to come up. And if you've got a packet, she's not going to give you the whole packet, but we'll record your presentation.
I'll pass it over to everybody in the room. Sorry for the question. So can everybody hear me okay? Okay. I know my voice doesn't always carry very well. So, thank you for inviting me to the study session today. And I'm glad that a lot of other communities were also able to join. A few of the communities have already heard this presentation. And I think, I know the ambulance service has also heard portions of it. So I am going to try to just highlight a few of the slides that I think are most important. And I have a feeling there'll probably be a lot of questions or maybe even comments as we go through this. Full disclosure, I do not have all of the answers. Okay? I know people right now are looking for, I think, more financial information. And any financial information or anything that I have given has been based on SafeTech. I think that that is part of your packet. And it is purely speculative. You know, it is subject to change. So with that, I am just going to get started. Again, my name is Patty Bates. I'm the CEO at the hospital. And to give a little bit of background about myself, I've worked in healthcare for 25 years for sure at different levels of healthcare, serving on long-term care. And now I have the pleasure of working at the Ely donation community hospitals in this area. So, I'll see if I can do this. A little bit about who we are, just in case people don't know. We are an independent, member-owned, and supported hospital. We're governed by a local volunteer board of directors that are members of the hospital. We are 21 beds, nonprofit, and we are considered critical access. And that is important as to when I go through this first scenario to note. We provide a full range of services and we are, right now, one of the region's largest employers. We have over 130 employees. Not all FTEs, but 130. This is, I wanted to just hit a little bit as to why EBCH started down this path again with ambulance and EMS. Because I'm sure as some, a lot of people probably remember, about 20-some years ago, the hospital did own and operate the ambulance service. At that time, it was decided that for sustainability purposes, in that environment, it was best to separate off the ambulance service and form it into its own nonprofit. And again, here we are today because, as we all know, things change consistently and constantly. So we are back trying to look for a sustainable solution. What started us down this path was about three years ago when the board went into some strategic planning. We were looking at our patient satisfaction scores. And we were noting in our patient satisfaction and our quality scores that our patients were expressing dissatisfaction with our emergency room services. So when we asked for specific comments as to what they were experiencing, here's just a few. "Disappointed in waiting for transport to Duluth, although it was stable, it took five to six hours." "I waited for the ambulance to take me to Duluth for more than three hours and it never showed up." "I think this should be looked into." "Had to take the helicopter." "Very unsatisfied customer." So, again, our doctors were hearing this and they started expressing concerns on behalf of the patients. They were getting, they noticed that there was a change in the ability to meet our medical transport needs, to be able to provide that additional continuum of care outside of the community. And this is not due to lack of quality 911 services or lack of quality with any of the ambulance services. This is strictly based on staffing and monetary resources. And I think if you expand it beyond ambulance, I won't get into all of that, but I believe fire and law enforcement are also experiencing similar frustrations. And even though they do not work directly within the hospital nor do any of the ambulance services, our emergency room is our front door and we feel it. They're the ones bringing patients into us. We have rules and regulations that we do need to follow and oftentimes, they're conflicting. We all have the same goal, is to take care of the patient, but the guidelines that we have to follow depending on the setting that that person is in to meet our healthcare needs differ and, again, often conflict. So, I think that added to some of the miscommunication, misunderstanding. And as you all probably know, we have, we currently have a contentious relationship with our local ambulance service. And we are trying to, you know, sort through that through communication and consistency, but hence why we're here, a part of the reason as to why we are looking at and working with SafeTech solutions to address this. I think I will skip, go the other way, skip a little bit through this unless anybody has questions about our different organizations. I just want to call out that due to the differences between public and private, I think that has made for, again, some missteps in communication and I will own some of that. I am used to following our hospital bylaws and I maybe was too overly cautious with trying to figure out how to protect private versus public and I didn't want to intervene, you know, and cause any public meeting rule violations or anything like that either. So, again, thanks for the invite from all of the communities. Did hit a little bit on the regulatory requirements. This, the financial assess assumptions that are included in that SafeTech use, I wanted to just call out a few highlights related to that. The study was done based on the hospital-patient finance payer mix, for lack of a better term. We, all three ambulance services, the information that was asked and that was received, it was tough to verify because some were more forthcoming with their information than others and, you know, others just needed more time, you know, to be able to get that information. So, we decided to take hospital financial statistics and 65% of our payer mix right now is government and that is Medicare and Medicaid payers. The remaining 35% is private insurance or private pay. So, the patient tracking data that we used, a lot of the call statistics were from what we tracked through the hospital on our quality statistics. We're required to report ambulance medical transports outside, how many people arrived to the hospital by ambulance. Those are all things that we have to report regularly to the state of Minnesota. It kind of, I guess, skewed maybe things a little bit because Tower and Babbitt, of course, don't always necessarily bring all of their 911 patients to Ely. It just depends on where the call comes in. Ambulance services are obligated to bring a patient to the closest hospital. And we would expect that to continue as we move through this. We used CMS data, which was nationwide data, to get billing numbers just to do some of the assumptions that we did. I think the biggest thing to remember is if there is one license that can be agreed to that the hospital owns, it does change to cost-based reimbursement for the medical and 911 care. So, for the staffing and the supplies and all of the patient needs, those would all qualify for cost-based reimbursement. Then we would be able to bill out, you know, through Medicare and everything right through our hospital billing department. Again, have not done any cost report implications to EBCH's bottom line at this point in time. The biggest thing that I believe an ambulance service, if it were run through the hospital, would need support with, or funding support with, would be for the capital. They have a lot of high capital costs, but those would all have to go through a legal review because, again, we are including more communities into the mix. We would have to restructure. There would be a whole different, you know, level that we would have to look at. Economies of scale would come through the hospital. Of course, employee ages and benefits would. We would also be able to provide education. And education would be to help individuals move up. You know, maybe if somebody is out there and wants to be an EMT, we could help support that. Maybe there's an EMT that might want to work as a paramedic, we could help support that. And really, I think the biggest thing is it's an increased opportunity for care in the region throughout all of our communities. And it really is more sustainable and more future-looking. So, I kind of went into this a little bit. I'll just skip over to that. I'm going to go to slide eight, which is really, everybody's been asking, you know, what's next? That big red arrow is pointing to this is where we're at. This is why I'm here. You know, I am requesting that the communities and ambulance services at least make a decision to want to move forward for a system-based solution where the hospital would own the license. The hospital cannot just take over anybody's license. The ambulance services and the communities that they're in, they have to voluntarily resign that license and the hospital would have to reapply for the license. My understanding is, right now, with existing EMS R B rules, what that would do is the PSAs could potentially then, and should potentially then, be combined into one primary service area that is quite large. I think the mayor might have even given me this statistic at one point in time. It's larger than the state of Rhode Island as to what we're looking at right now for EMS, you know, ambulance service coverage. But it is important, again, to continue to live here and to continue to be able to receive medical care. I do have to add, you know, we are taking this seriously because a reminder, a hospital without an ambulance service is also not going to be very sustainable. And it's been obvious over the last, or at least an ambulance service that is willing to work with the hospital and willing to be able to communicate and grow with the hospital's You know, we're looking that this could be sustainable definitely for the next 10 years as we look into this. It may not be the perfect solution, but it is a solution because right now, what we're doing isn't working. And what we would be able to do with the one license is provide sustainable ALS coverage, 911 coverage, medical transports. We would also be able to provide the government bodies with a budget with requests that could be worked on or budgeted in for support for any type of capital costs that would, will more than likely be needed as we move through this. Again, I can't comment on those numbers because, you know, quite frankly, it's going to take a lot of legal work and a lot of conversations. I know one of the rumors, there's two things that have come up. I was asked by one of the ambulance services, well, how much would this, you know, how much would this cost us, you know, per capita? I estimated at the time that if you were just looking at the one ambulance service or at the ambulance services as individuals, my estimate was anywhere from $45 to, you know, $55 per capita. That is just me throwing something at the dartboard and that is existing services that, again, has not been forecasted out. SafeTech solutions, I have them on hold right now because for them to develop that budget will cost more money. And I do want to give one caveat that when the hospital moved in this direction, instead of putting, you know, putting money or making a donation towards our existing service, we decided to come up with a sustainable solution or a potentially sustainable solution by doing this study. And as we went into this, the overall cost of the study was close to $70,000. I did write for grants through Arrowhead EMS and through the Minnesota Department of Health and they did reimburse for half of the cost of the study. So, I just want to give them credit because they were very supportive in this process. So, that's a lot in a nutshell, but I guess if there's questions or comments, any comments or...
I think we're going to start out by Councilor Horstman, who is our representative of the administrative board. That represents entities and cities. He's the one who requested that we have this, so I'm going to have him just kind of kick things off. But before I even do that, there's a clipboard that went around. Did everyone sign it? Because if you didn't, you need to sign before you leave. Otherwise, Casey's going to come. So, Patty, why don't I have you sit down?
Okay.
Is that, would that be okay?
I'm fine.
I'm going to have Al just say a few words and then we'll go ahead and get started. How about that?
Sure. Thank you. I'm glad to see everybody here that was invited, at least represented at some level today. And, you know, as this was presented a couple of months ago, it seemed like, you know, there was some very useful information and some things that we had to take back to our own organizations, whatever they are, whether it's a municipality or an ambulance service or that, and trying to evaluate it and see how it affected us. To me, as I looked at what was presented, it seemed like there was a very clear path forward, you know, but that's from the municipality view. So, I know that the, you know, you go back to when the Ely ambulance service kind of became public with their financial troubles and that, you know, one of the cries that the public was saying was, "We love our ambulance service." And I think that could be echoed by everybody in this room, like, you know, I mean, we do love our ambulance service. We know we have top-quality ambulance personnel out there and, but, you know, the question is, you know, can we keep them employed and working and doing the service that they need to provide to the community? So, the idea of this study session was to get everybody together and at least have somebody from each organization, you know, are we going to let this drop? Are we going to try to move forward with this? You know, where is your organization at? And I'd love to hear that from everybody. I represent the council on the joint power board, but, you know, I'm one person. I can't speak for them either, so I'm very much interested in hearing what they have to say. So, and it also gives a chance to question the hospital on the presentation that they provided and that. So, with that in mind, I, we didn't come here to listen to me talk. I do have my own questions that I would like to ask, but, you know, with that, let's maybe let the others step forward.
Okay. So, if you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to. We'll do that nicely, fortuitely, with respect to everybody else in the room. Otherwise, I'll gaggle you, which I don't like to do. So, you would need to raise your hand and come forward, say your name and where you are from. You don't need, do we need to hack us or just the community you're from? You need to come to the podium. That's just the best way. We tried to figure out a way around it, we just can't. So, that's how we're going to get started. Does anybody have any comments, what your thoughts are about this, or questions? Because we just don't... Come on up.
Sign up sheet, does that count?
Nope. The sign up sheet is just an attendance sheet.
So, my name's Eric. I work for Lynn and Babbitt, work on the ambulance service, also work for Lake County ambulance service. So, I had a question. Your PowerPoint that says you will value transfers at the same level of 911s. It's also saying that you guys are assuming you'll have two rigs in Ely, a rig at Tower and a rig in Babbitt. Right now, we're in an EMS shortage. I'm wondering how you guys are going to support getting that many people up here when there's not a lot of EMS to go around? And if you do have shortages, where are you going to pull from? Are you going to make Ely your main headquarters so people in Marist or other Greenwood are waiting over an hour for an ambulance at times? And then, are you guys going to leave your PSA unprotected if you guys are on a transfer and they get an emergent transfer on top of that where it's a life for Lynn? That would make, leave your PSA uncovered so Virginia would have to come in and take it, or go up or Lake County? So...
We have looked at that. There's a couple of things that I do need to remind everybody. This would be the hospital's responsibility to staff and employ. And if that is the level that we are committing to, to start out with, then that is the level that we will have to achieve. We are also not experts in everything ambulance. That is why we would be working with SafeTech to give us an operational model to assure that we can meet the expectations that they laid out in this scenario. Creating a system approach, of course, is going to be different than what we currently
How would it be different? Like, what changes are going to be made?
I can't, it would all be speculative for me to say that. I don't know what the operations, you know, the details of the operations would be.
I want to thank Al for asking folks to show up there so you get more information. My intent here tonight is to not counter the hospital, counter anything at this point. My purpose is to ask caution before you make any final decision. Too many questions, not nothing, even one with what happens to the current facility has to be updated. Will that be utilized by the hospital or not? I asked the question, I've got music. We, we've got 20-some employees that we're really concerned about and they're good employees. And we want to be sure that they have deployment if there are any changes. One thing we don't want to do in this community is have governments cause a layoff. It never goes over the limit. Number of ambulances in Ely would go to two because I mentioned the transport van that we have. And being one ambulance in Babbitt, one in Tower, it just seems that that's a reduction in capability from our perspective when we go around. Now, we've seen a lot of things this year. We've got a lot of changes. There's a EMS R B basis we got in 18 changes, an elevated to governor's cabinet-level position and they haven't settled any of that. The EMS, the emergency medical task group met in the final meeting and they let everybody talk and all they did was vote to approve their report, the cement of the legislative set. They didn't make any dispositive decisions. So, this is going to be an interesting year. We might have a new governor next year. There may not be a trifecta in St. Paul of Democrats. And no decisions have been made down in St. Paul about a deal with this issue, which is statewide. I'm just saying, don't throw caution to the wind. We need to take baby steps with this. I'd jump in and make any rash decisions. And one thing I've learned... And one thing I've learned, and advise, when someone says, "I heard," or "I was told," it's not a credible statement. Ask for the facts. Ask for the background, because it's all rumor-based. The, uh, I was glad to hear this. Ambulance service patients are happy, especially on 911. Transports are an issue. It's money. It's reimbursements. I want to thank the city of Ely and, you know, the city of Lincoln, on North Paul Lake for contributing. But, you know, on that estimate we heard and Patty said tonight, you know, right now the city's at fifteen dollars, fifteen cents per capita budget for next year. Forty-five, fifty-five dollars per capita? That's over three times what you've already thought of it. Takes you up to a big amount. We need, we need sustainable funding. Changes to Medicare, not just for us, but for the hospital and other medical services. I don't think that's going to happen in Washington quickly at all. Uh, we need reimbursements for insurance companies, but there are non-government organizations funded to manage Medicare, so they play by the rules. Where this goes, I don't know. I don't think you can predict it at this point. You know, my concern is this line is stolen. You don't throw the baby out with the bathwater in two years and they want the baby back. You can't find them. So, but, uh, one comment was made to us in the meeting, Patty, that the hospital may actually go out to get a waiver to have their own contract for ambulance service for transports. My question is, if they're in a contract, they're going to pay money to an ambulance service to do transfers for the hospital. Why not ours? Just a question. If, uh, the only thing my board's concerned about right now is the hospital always predicts we have a contentious relationship. I wonder where that's from. Thanks for your time.
Hi. Glenn Anderson, Babbitt City Council. Been the fire chief there for many years. Worked on the ambulance service for many years. Worked in a hospital in Virginia for many years, so I do have the background for a lot of this stuff. Some of the questions that we had after Patty did her presentation to us was, "Who's going to supply the ambulances for Tower?" And we have two ambulances, and now Ely's going to take that over, and we're going to have one ambulance. Are you going to buy our ambulances that we have because now they belong to you? Or are we supplying ambulance? You know, do we have to supply them now every year, every couple of years? Or is the hospital totally going to supply the ambulances?
Well, again, that would lead to the government entity funding support, you know, what that looked like. Um, the goal, of course, is to be able to keep the ambulances in each community. And if, because you would have to put staging and a lot of operational protections in place. Again, we are required by law to be able to cover what we commit to. Otherwise, you're putting the hospital at risk too, not only the ambulance services. So, um, what that would look like, and I think one of the questions that you and I talked about or in Babbitt that came up was, I know we have, there are physical ambulances, but my challenge would be how many of those ambulances are actually staffed 24/7? And as we transition, if the community decides to go in this direction, you know, at, there will be a transition timeframe. And what that staffing model will look like is we will commit to that initial two in Ely, one in each community, but if there's a higher need, you can still backfill with volunteer and the existing support that we have. Until you could maybe gain fully and plumply more people again. And there'd have to be legalities with any of the equipment.
So what I'm hearing is you would be responsible to staff those people. Staffing, now all of a sudden we're going to be able to still supply, you know, these in case they can't make it? So we just lost hope of what we're doing right now.
A lot.
Because we do have our services and we do have our people. And we do have two ambulances. And yes, we have a call roster. Try to keep up as much as possible. And it happens every once in a while. But if there's a second rig that's needed, very few times will we not have a second rig that goes out. The other question that comes in is, there's two ambulances in Ely, there's one in Babbitt, and there's one in Tower. You get two emergency transfers and get a 911 call. That means Tower or Babbitt is going to need their community to come to Ely to do a 911 call. Not one of those communities is out, is out of ambulance. And, you know, that could happen.
It happens now.
Well, not very often does it happen. Right now, there's enough that we respond. Tower responds, Babbitt responds. You know, because we have the staff, they have availability. But that would really look at cutting down our response time. And the area that we have is huge, huge, one ambulance is. I don't think it's enough. The other thing is, okay, so you're going to house in our place. Are you going to reimburse us for housing that ambulance in our, on our area? Are you going to rent our space? Or is that, again, up to us, which is a question that we haven't ever heard of? You know, are you going to be responsible for that area?
For what area?
If you're going to house an ambulance in our fire hall, where it is right now, are, are you going to pay us rent to rent that, that space? You're going to have moving quarters. You're going to have to have, you know, shower facilities, bedroom facilities. You're going to have to have that all there. Are you putting that in? Or is that a cost that's going to cost us to take care of it and then we maintain it? Is that part of the, the plan?
The, it is not a part of the plan at this point in time because we have not got that far down. Uh, there are, again, to go down that path, you would have to realistically, you would have the one license, okay? It would be different. You would have to create some type of a task force, joint powers, some type of legislation out there to be able to govern some of what is required for those coverage components that you are talking about. The EMSRB, I know it's not that anymore, the Office of EMS, they have their own set of rules and regulations that we would, if we own the license, we're going to be obligated to, to provide that and work with the communities.
And that's the other question which you can't answer because we don't have from the state yet is, if we give up our PSA and all of a sudden you're taking over the whole area and it falls apart, are we going to be able to get our PSA back? Or is it going to, somebody else going to be able to come in and take it? And that's, I know you can't answer. That's a real concern for us. Because if we lose that PSA, you could have another ambulance service or Gold Cross. You know, it used to be Gold Cross. You got one of them come in and say, "We'll take over the whole area. We'll do it." And that was approached on us many, many years ago, I think, everybody that's been around. Gold Cross wanted this whole area, and they were really serious at the time. So that's a concern we have. The other thing is when we do right now, we do a lot of transfers for other hospitals. Lots. And that makes money for our ambulance service. And that's why we are, got money, to be honest with you. That's what pays our bills. That's what gives us our money. We're looking at another ambulance service. No, we pay cash. We don't, we don't have to worry about getting a loan, city chipping in. We have money. I don't worry what to do. And probably could buy a second, you know, so. The money's there that we have, and it's due to those transfers. Or we're going to lose those if you take over the license. Because you're not going to let us take our ambulance service because it belongs to you. I'm sure you're not going to say, "Okay, Virginia needs a transfer. You guys can go on that transfer," because then you don't have an ambulance covering our area. So it's going to cut down on, on some of that. And that's, you know, like I say, we always look at, if we take a transfer, we make sure we have a crew in Tower and we take a transfer. And we do a lot of them, a lot more than people think. And, and that's a money maker for us, big one. And we would be giving that up. So that's a concern that we also have to look at. So those are some of the things that weren't answered, some of the things that I thought about afterwards. And again, they're real concerns that we are kind of looking at. Thank you for your time.
Glenn?
Yeah, if I could, Patty, um, I swear when we had the presentation from Safe Tech Solutions, they actually did address the, the two remote facilities and, and actually having them staffed. And, and, you know, the facilities would have been the responsibility of, of the ambulance service or the hospital. And I think that was included in their, in their calculations for their viability of their cost of housing.
I swear I heard that when, when they had their initial thing. I just want to make sure of that.
Well, that's, that's it. As long as you brought it up, because I wasn't going to bring it up. That was a real concern that we had. They talked to our ambulance director one time, got some statistics, got some numbers, and that was it. Our council was not informed about any of this. I'm on the service calendar on, on the council site for the ambulance supplier department, police department, never heard a word about any of this. Was not approached by these people who spent seventy thousand dollars. And that was really concerning to me because I, I have a lot of this. I'd like to understand. So when you're telling us that we know that, no, we don't right now. We weren't sitting at the table, and that's really, really frustrating. Because maybe we would have a few more questions to answer, and we wouldn't be where we are now. So, yeah. Didn't sit well with us when we phoned up. I got a phone call going, "Have you heard about this?" I called my ambulance director. What does he say? "Yeah, I went to a meeting and he asked me a bunch of questions, and I haven't seen him since." So, yeah, it wasn't all pretty. So, thank you.
Next up.
Hi. I'm Kevin Darby. I'm a city town square at Tower. I just want to say thanks to you guys for pulling us together. It's a hard subject for almost a time now. But it's something that we've been dealing with quite a bit. I've been working with City Tower on ambulance commission and also been working with our neighboring townships to try to figure out joint powers board. We might work well for that as well. Um, so some of the things I think that we need to counter, if we can't get a decent, from a governance point of view, if we can't get a real good idea of what the cost might be for this, I think one of the things we need to start working on sooner than later, and Tower is fully supportive of taking next steps and trying to find better solutions. We think this is a great idea. But if we take this further, one of the things I think we need to do is to figure out a framework of how we're going to do governance on this and how are we going to have, uh, communities, including our townships, be involved to talk about how to oversee and then how do we approve increases? Because we know that there's going to be increases that happen. But how are the local townships and towns, how are we going to be a part of that discussion going forward? Um, so one of the things that would be interesting to see here, we need to see, I think, is if it's relicensed into a, a new area, is it going to be able to be relicensed as being a taxing district? And if it's going to be a taxing district, how are we going to do a joint powers board to govern that taxing district? But I think that's part of the approaches we need to talk about and take a look at. Because that'll help us have some kind of control taxation and to help with any of these increases and make it a little bit easier to work with. That's one of the things I think we want to see is how do we get all the other townships involved? How do we do a framework for governance on this? Have at least some kind of a thing to work around with that. I think that might help get assurances that all of our townships are going to participate as well on that.
Can I just interrupt just a little on that point? So the Coalition of Greater Insular Cities and Rams all got together for this last session. I think you were a part of it, um, and helped with this whole EMS bill. And afterwards, we did a follow-up with Coalition of Greater Insular Cities, or I did. And they were asking, we were talking about EMS and what are the next steps and what's the next legislative session going to be about? And just kind of a summary of what happened, steps going forward next. And out of the fifty-three member cities, fifty-four, that had EMS issues, Ely was one of three in some sort of, we weren't by ourselves as far as fire, as far as EMS. I don't know the other one, but the example, the other example they gave you that wasn't in the joint powers like Ely is, was Cloquet and the fire district. So they said that's kind of the example going moving forward. So there are not a lot of examples out there in Minnesota of cities, standalone cities. And most examples are standalone cities, not having townships involved as such. So, um, that's going to be, I mean, someone's going to really have to use some outside-of-the-box thinking, like you say, to think about things like that. So that's the way we need to be thinking. If this is the model we're going to be using going forward, so just put it all together.
Yeah, I think that's important for everybody. How does that look?
How does that look?
What does that mean, new organization?
And to take the emotion out of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, other than that, the only other line-range thing that I think that we need to talk about is making sure we have some kind of input and say that. What we'd really not like to see happen as well, I think, is to all of a sudden be outsourced to a private company as well. So without a lot of input from our community on some of those kind of things. Um, anyway, those were the points that I wanted to bring up. I don't know if there's anything else? Thanks.
You know, I understand the concept that they're working together. We can potentially get a better result. It sounds like we can access highly endorsement rates if we work together. But in a thing, effort like this, the del, the de, the del is in the details. And Patty can't answer those details, I don't think, because they don't exist yet. That would be involved in the next step of creating, as she said on page five, and we're, what's next? And we're on the very first step. And down in C, it says, which are number three, we're not there yet, create a detailed design and implementation plan. If we had that, that would start to talk about all of these questions that people have that we don't know yet. But that plan, that detailed design, I'm sure costs a fair amount of money and consultants to do that. And I'm wondering whether the money that was allocated by the state could be used to support this kind of a study as we go forward? I don't know where that money exists or how it gets used or distributed. But if it's our intention to want to explore what the cooperative arrangement might look like, then we should work together to find the funding to get those answers. And it might be that it turns out that this is just going to be too expensive. We can't do it. I don't, we don't know that. But we should get to that number three, create a detailed design and implementation plan so that we can continue the discussion. Thanks, man.
Go ahead. I see a hand in the back. I can't see a foot. Okay, I'm on the, so I can handle Tower and those. I look at this differently. So Tower seems really small and such. We can go last night. We had four calls between 10:00 AM, it's about 10:00 PM, and 1:30, 2:00 AM. Most of us got home at 3:30 this morning. A call that was at 9:22 also included ELS. They did not kill the hospital until 29 minutes after the 11:00. And that was Ely Hospital. That tells you how long, how far, how big the unit we have to do. Um, so last night, one call had two lists taken because our medics were back there. So, you know, I get it that you guys want to have less rigs. I just don't see how that's going to work. Because in the long run, we will have to be asking for neighbors to come in, and the neighbors don't
and the neighbors don't have extra people either. Tower handled all four of those talks. You know, I mean, and we have a lot less employees than Ely. But we also have people that show up when the checks are down. If this isn't done right, if it isn't made to bring people in and feel happy and, you know... EMS is not covert. We don't look at the bottom. People care and we do what we do because of it. So, I mean, I love what Patty's doing because I see homogeneity. But I think already I'm seeing things that need to be changed. I agree with Lynn. We have two ambulances in nineteen and we just got a twenty-four. So where's that cost gonna come from? We don't have our own hall. We don't have anything in Tower. So something would have to be built. I don't think the City of Tower has money to build it. You know, it's just, there's a lot of questions that I'd like answered. I mean, I see all sides. I do feel that Safe Tech was very good as far as coming out to meet us. So I don't know where the discipline came about it. I think Ely, they came out and saw it right. So, and I really don't understand that. But that's kind of my opinion that, you know, we're not doing this, most of us, because we're trying to take care of our communities. And that's why we want to move up to next level.
Are you a current speaker?
I am a regular here, please. Yeah, I'm Bob Greeney. I'm a supervisor at Tommors and I'm on the joint powers, one board elected. And I'm on the other one that holds the right of the ambulance license. And when we took this over, main deal was it was a forty thousand dollar grant twenty years ago. John Fossum, when it was all done, said the reason we took it over was we can build the people. The hospital's a nonprofit. They cannot build it. Okay? And when we took it over, we had two-wheel-drive ambulances, bottom aisles on, a beat-up trailer, and an old Arctic cat. After that, we bought three front-wheel-drive ambulances. And part of the deal was that we would take over. When somebody got hurt, our guys from Fall Lake, Tommors, would go over and take, take over that area. Six unorganized townships, plus Stony River, which Ely has, part of. So we did all that for nothing. So when somebody gets hurt, we go out there and do it for nothing. We pay our guys. And then over the years, they let us rent a building, I don't know where it is, on West End there. We had to put a heater in there. We paid for it. We had to put, what else did we do? We had to pay for the heater and we had to pay them two hundred dollars a month to rent that place that had no sewer or water. We had to pay it. And I'll leave it at that. I could say a lot more. That's enough.
I'm Dave Semberg. I'm there at Tower. And I just wanna say that, you know, I appreciate everything that everybody's doing here. And when we take a look at, we're definitely supportive to look at the next steps. So I mean, I don't wanna be delightful of not having a better way of doing things. And obviously, it's not working well the way things are going right now. We used to make money too when it was all volunteer. Yeah, and that, but we're required to be twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And when we have to pay people, it's difficult for our community to do that. And so that's why we're looking. That's why some of us were down in that same hall, testifying for the rural ambulance service. And on behalf of the bill, which we're all gonna receive hopefully funds December twenty-sixth, each service. And, but that came to the point when we were at that meeting that a lot of our legislators did not know at that time how much we did not receive in funds when it was Medicare or Medicaid. And so we're doing a lot to break that to light. But if they made up that difference, we could make money. But that is probably a long time down the road. So I think that, in just taking a look at it, we know there's gonna need to be changes from the plan that they presented because we had four calls last night, you know, two rigs out at a time. So we know there's gonna be a lot of change and we have to look at that. I'd definitely like to see some information. You know, I know at the last meeting with you, they talked a lot about going to one PSA. There was a rule about thirty-five miles away. And then because of that, you could change your accounting basis to...
To cost-based.
Yeah, to where you get a lot more reimbursement, which we don't get at this time, but they could do that. Being able to rewrite a PSA allows you to do a lot of things. Ours was written by the EMS RV many years ago, which at that time, we didn't, there wasn't foresight to put in there to give us the ability to do any taxation, to do anything from that perspective. And so by creating a new PSA, this gives an opportunity to start with a clean slate and actually write things the correct way and then make it even, make a better service. So, well, I can't say that at the end game, that yes, it's something you really wanna do. I know we're supportive of looking for a better way. As a community, we're all losing, or many of us are losing money. So to help out with certain things, obviously, whether it's providing some land to build a location for, for building or whatever, I think there's a lot of support for that. So, anyway, wish you the best.
Hi, Rob Melman, EBCH board member, new board member, only been there about a year so far. But I just wanna reemphasize a little bit of my understanding why we went down this path, the EBCH board. And it's mainly for the transfers. The nine-one-one service has been working quite well. And it's the transfers. Eleven percent of the people in twenty-twenty-three had to take themselves, or family member had to take themselves. More than one out of ten people had to take themselves to a higher level of care or special care. That's not even counting people had to wait three, four more hours before the ambulance transfer come. So it's the meetings that I've been in so far, EBCH is not looking to take over an ambulance service again. We're just trying to figure out a better solution so that everything can be covered more effectively. And the consultants we've hired are nationally known and have done this throughout the country. And this was the model that they've come up with, mainly because Ely is a critical access hospital and there's different ways of fighting this ambulance service of that way. Just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Rob, thanks for bringing up transfers. That kind of leads into a question I have. I know that one of the things that was brought up, as people were, you know, saying about how much they love the ambulance service, is, you know, they would bring up examples of when they were in the hospital and, you know, the ambulance service took them to, on a transport, to a further level of care than we have here in Ely. And, you know, seeing that there are a number of them that have had to self-drive and things like that, and this is an issue. I'm kinda curious, Patty, can you tell me? You know, do you know what the average response time is for a, for a transfer? For, through your records?
Anywhere from two to four hours. Once they're stabilized, and that is by ground transfer.
So two to four hours from the time you reach out to, you must put it out there somehow that it's needed and that it can come from, from Ely or anywhere? Or do you specifically ask for it?
We have to go to Ely first.
Okay.
And then, you know, like we've talked about, sometimes there's just nine-one-one. You know, it is impossible to leave your PSA. So then the physician has to make the decision to see if they call out to other ambulance services and/or there are certain requirements for helicopter or air transport. And not everybody always needs that. And sometimes the weather just does not cooperate.
Do you know what, you know what the state average response time is for transfers?
I don't know the state average. I can tell you that in the metro area, this isn't an issue. In Duluth, it's not an issue. In our rural areas, and especially with critical access hospitals, I would say that you are, pretty much everybody is in that two to four hour wait time. And that is why, you know, like we've identified a few times, you know, that's a EMS crisis, you know, that the entire nation, quite honestly, is in.
So we're not on a line with EMS?
No.
Can I see something here? Quickly, Jeff. So, quickly.
Okay. Sorry, here. I just thought the else question here is looking at, when we say eleven percent of the transports, are we talking about a composite, if I understand, of the three services? Let's see a breakdown of that. Which services are in eleven percent? How many were? On the delays, we used to have paid-on call. That way people were, would answer the calls and come in with a reasonable amount of time. With lack of funding, we no longer had paid-on call. We have to cross our fingers that at least two of our qualified staff will come in and take the transport. This is all my, all issue across the whole state is mine. Fire is out there asking, don't make any rash decisions. Thanks.
For gathering information. I need for asking to... Anybody else? Anyone else?
I was gonna report what you say.
Yeah.
I have my transfer thing going. Hi, I'm Katie Clark. I've covered a lot of rural healthcare hardware. And I've spent a lot of time reading the CMS regulations. And I understand all about critical access and cost reimbursement and all of this. When Safe Tech made their presentation, they talked about the scheme where, you know, that whole thirty-five mile buffer horrible thing that's in the CMS regulations. If you put a remote station in Babbitt, you put a remote station in Tower and you have the main facility here in Ely, there's nothing in the CMS regs about doing that. And Safe Tech talked about it basically being essentially a scheme or loophole in the regs to get the cost reimbursement to work for the critical access hospital designation. Because you can't do that for an ambulance service. It's only available to critical access hospitals. And I've never heard or seen an ambulance service doing remote stations and getting away with it. And actually, I looked around several different rural states and couldn't find anything. Are you, is Safe Tech really sure that that is a model that the government is gonna swallow? That's my question.
That is something, yes, we have looked into. And that is all, again, based on critical access licensure. And that would be how we set up the operations of our ambulance department. And we are allowed, as a critical access hospital, to have satellite locations.
Got it. That's...
In fact, we do have a satellite clinic in Babbitt.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
I don't know, I'm gonna mark everyone who speak, but I would hope that before we leave tonight, that there's some, our desire to continue to meet as a working group, just a person or two from each interest area, each community, so that we can continue this discussion and try to get to the point where we can get the answers to the many questions that were asked.
Anybody else?
My name is Matt Tupler. I represent writing township. I have twenty-three years in EMS, formerly as an ambulance director and still on Tower Ambulance. I look at this as a scope of scale. So you see this often when towns work together to try and make things more affordable. You see that in the East Range Police Department. You see that over in Gilbert and by Wilding working together. You see that in Aurora and by Wilding working together to build a water plant, right? We see this all the time. When things get too costly, we need to work together as communities to make scope of scale better. We see it in sports, right? We can't field a team, Tower can't field a team. Now it's Tower and Ely, right? We put, we work together, now we have a team. There's some years that Ely has enough kids for a team. Tower only has two, vice versa, right? As far as employment, you know, the hospital's gonna employ local people. They're not gonna import people from Duluth to drive two hours up here to do a shift. You know, these, these are gonna be local folks. This is dual, right? There's a reason why we're here today, right? And just because maybe Tower's sitting greater, in this case, Babbitt, right? Babbitt's making money today. That doesn't mean next year, Babbitt's losing money and they only have four people on the roster. Just because things are good today doesn't mean it's good tomorrow. We're seeing it on fire. Fire departments are closing every day, right? This isn't, this is something that we need to work towards. I personally, and being, doing this for a long time, it's been a hard thing for me to swallow these changes too. But volunteerism is darn your head, you know? And the advantage that the hospital brings is quality, right? We have, for example, I work at the wastewater plant. I was the ambulance director. That's not my specialty. That's not what I went to school for. Yeah, I did a hundred and twenty hours of training in two thousand and one. That doesn't mean that I'm qualified to direct twenty people, you know? And I had ten of them that said I did a good job and ten that said I didn't, right? So, but in this case, you've got a full-time ambulance director managing these people. You have hospital resources. You have an infectious disease specialist that's gonna come and teach you about COVID, right? Not the wastewater plant operator trying to teach you about COVID, right? So there's stroke specialists. There's, there's every level, right? And this stuff's only gonna get more and more high-level. It already is, you know? Twenty-five years ago, Tower had a hearse that they drove and picked up people. It was literally a hearse converted into an ambulance. Maybe a little more than twenty-five, thirty years, whatever it was. The first one was a hearse. I remember. There's pictures on the wall. Now we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollar ambulance, right? With tons of technology. And the next thing is going to be remote, where we're gonna be diagnosing these patients in the field, right? Well, how best to do that, other than working with the hospital, right? So that's my two cents. I wanna see this go. Yes, am I afraid that it's gonna fail? Yeah, with anything, right? We all take that chance, right? Nobody, Patty's not gonna have all these answers. There's no way. It's impossible. We need, I already yelled at her about numbers, right? That's the first thing I said, like, you can't give me the sign-off. I'm not paying a hundred dollars per person, right? Our taxpayers will lose their minds, right? But in order to move forward, we need those answers. So, next step.
Anybody else? And we're a jury. You're welcome there. Anybody else? Want to say anything?
Roger, we're not a jury, I just saw you laugh. Where are you?
We're in, we are wrapping up, so we are wrapping up.
I just, I just want to bring it up that, you know, we are working on this issue. It's not a done issue. The federal government is the key. Maybe you've all said that already. But we can get Medicare to pay their fair share. A lot of these issues go away. Not all of them, but some. So we got a lot of people, Natalie's working on it, Grant working on it, Senator Kottfeld, sorry. But we're, I'm watching it like a hawk, trust me. A little bit that we got you, did it help everyone?
Yeah, it does. Patty, it comes till almost December. We got the applications in with the MSRB.
Yeah.
My good friend Paul Markart, that'll help us.
Yes.
It was next year, we had to figure it out. Talked with them, we're good, say, it's going to come.
Yeah.
That'll help. You have to do that every year, Roger, go down there, yeah.
Keep putting me there, I'll be there. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
I don't want anybody to leave this room, or anybody to think before you leave, that we don't care about anybody. We really deeply care about the work that you do, especially if you're an emergency service individual. I cannot, I do not want to imagine what you see and do on every call, what your thoughts are, what your feelings are, and what you're going through. It is not something that I could ever do. We appreciate you, we appreciate what you're doing. What we are doing right now is something that is very difficult, to balance a budget, to do the things that we have to do not to, or it comes down to money. And sometimes I just, I'm sorry to say it this way, but it really sucks sometimes. And so we have to make some difficult decisions from our end to do things more efficiently. And to balance the two is really, really difficult, and we have to have some really hard conversations and to figure out what is the best way to do it, what's the best way to deliver these goods. So just because we're making these tough decisions does not mean we are devaluing what you are doing. Because I tell you, it is not something that I could ever do. So thank you for what you're doing. You have helped me and my family and extended family numerous times on a whole, and I appreciate that more than words could say. To go to what Paul Kess has said earlier, if there are some of you who definitely want to move forward with this, you want to help think these things through, how should we do that? Reach out to, to, sign up right now before you leave. Otherwise, we will send out an email, we will hound you. We'll get an email out to you. All right. Thank you all so very much for joining us this evening, we appreciate it. I do have some cookies still out in the hallway, because I said I'd send treats. And if you don't eat them, that means they're, we'll bring them all tomorrow, and I don't tomorrow, we'll eat them tomorrow when I come to City Hall. So thank you once again for joining us. We are-
Can I, just one quick, no, just a quick question. So then, I, I will be moving forward under the guise that there will be a working group put together, and we will start working on step three.
As long as you don't spend money, yes.
Well, like I said, grant money is available, so, I will.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We are a jury.